We are, because we have about 60 people signed up.
Yeah.
But with respect.
I told you, it must have sent you to about 25, and I heard that five or six, which means some of the others.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, and welcome to the Palo Alto City Council Forum. My name is Charlie Wydans. I'm the president and CEO of the Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce, and on behalf of our Board of Directors and our Government Advisory Committee, it's our pleasure to welcome you here this evening. I also want to extend a great appreciation to our candidates for joining us this evening for this discussion, and our moderator, former Palo Alto Mayor Vic O'Jackian. So thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you all for being here tonight.[57.62][57.62](APPLAUSE). Other folks, I'd like to recognize, Councilmember Vicky Vinker is here, and former Palo Alto Mayor Larry Klein is here, so welcome to each of you. Thank you.[71.56][71.56](APPLAUSE). Before we begin, I'd like to just give you a little bit of update of what the Chamber's been up to over this past year, and as a voice of business for the Palo Alto business community, what we've been active in. So far this year, we've participated in numerous local, county, and even statewide issues that are important to our business community. Locally, we continue to take part in the conversations on California Avenue and downtown streetscape designs, promoting new ways to retain and attract businesses here in Palo Alto, including suggestions on revisions to ordinances that can make it easier to do business here. We have engaged with City Council and city staff, raising concerns about the Caltrans- El Camino Real repaving project that will eliminate on-street parking, eliminate convenient and accessible parking in front of our businesses, and make it more difficult for some customers to visit their favorite stores. The Chamber staff and board spoke to the City Council and city staff about our concerns, about how the removal of car parking will affect businesses on El Camino, and we're pleased that staff are quickly working on convenient and accessible side-street parking options for employees and customers. We've worked with Palo Alto Transportation Management to help spread the word on how businesses and employees can take advantage of public transportation and the new parking designs. We also spoke in favor of approving a ballot measure this November for the Quarry Transitway Connection Program. This project emphasizes improvement of transportation, and we believe this project will not only improve transit access for Caltrain and bus commuters, but will also improve bicycle and pedestrian access for those crossing El Camino. Our local businesses depend on solid public transportation systems to get their employees from their homes to the job site, and these improvements will create safer experience and provide better connectivity for Palo Alto workers. The Chamber spoke in favor of the city recommendations to permit La Camita to relocate part-time to the new community center for their nutrition senior program. It was a favorable outcome for La Camita. We are also members of the Santa Clara County Chamber Coalition, where we have signed on to take positions on legislation that supports our businesses in the county. On California Avenue, our Chamber Foundation is a partner with the City of Palo Alto, Stanford Research Park, and more than a dozen Calav businesses to support the monthly Third Thursday event with monthly themes and music, attracting residents and guests to walk, shop, and dine on Calav. Our Leadership Palo Alto Program continues to attract community leaders from all sectors for this 10-month program that focuses on taking your leadership to the next level, with tips, best practices from leaders in government, education, business, healthcare, and more. And addressing community, commerce, and civil discourse, we are a partner with Sibling Cities USA, and it celebrated its second anniversary recently, and the Chamber is pleased to be participating sponsor. Overall, the Chamber continues to provide a great return on your investment as a business here in Palo Alto, networking, visibility, advocacy, education, and leadership opportunities. So again, thank you for being here tonight, and we appreciate it, and we look forward to hearing from our panelists. So now I'd like to introduce Vic O'Jackian. Vic is an almost 50-year resident of the City of Palo Alto. He served in Palo Alto Public Office for 14 years, including on the Planning and Transportation Commission and City Council. He was mayor in 2002. Vic has spent the last 20 years working on mental health and suicide prevention matters with local, regional, California State, and national committees. He spent several years on the Santa Clara County Behavioral Health Board. He currently co-chairs the Santa Clara County Suicide Prevention Oversight Committee. He and his wife, Mary, have received recognition for their community work, including the Palo Alto Chamber Tall Tree Outstanding Citizen Volunteer in 2010. He enjoys watching regional sports teams play and eating at the many good Palo Alto restaurants. And Vic, I know you drove up here from Morgan Hill today to be here with us, so again, we appreciate it. So welcome, Vic.[327.66][327.66](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Charlie. Yeah, I even kept my name badge on. Today is, today we had our County Suicide Prevention Conference, which we hold one day out of each year, usually in September, because September is Suicide Prevention Month. So, but when the Chamber asked me if I would do this, I said yes, for a couple of different reasons, but one, the Chamber, separate from me, we each gave talks to youth community services this summer about things around government and advocacy, so I'm happy to interact again with the Chamber. So I want to thank them all for organizing and sponsoring this event. I want to particularly recognize quickly those people on the Government Affairs Committee for the Chamber, if they could raise their hands, so you can see a number of them are sprinkled throughout. Also, for those folks, make sure folks know, Mid Peninsula Community Media Center is taping this event, so it'll be posted on the Chamber website and also on their website, so if anybody wants to see this or refer it to a friend. I think they left, but I also wanted to thank, because we didn't get to this in your talk, Charlie, Taco Licious for providing the food at no cost. They're providing that.[436.03][436.03](APPLAUSE). So, I don't know about some of you, but I think I'll be going to Taco Licious maybe even this weekend to make sure that they get some money out of this. Then I want to thank all of you. I mean, not everybody comes out for meetings on a Thursday night in the middle of the afternoon, but it shows we've got good attendance, and that means people understand this is an important election, and we're going to learn some of the key issues, about some of the key issues from the folks here. Now, I already silenced my cellphone. Has everybody done that? Great, so we don't get interrupted. Though there's many issues, just like in my day, that this community looked at and had to be decided on, tonight the focus is going to be on mainly business matters. There are other forums that are going to be out there, I think next week, on Thursday, this Thursday next week, some of the folks in the environmental community are going to have a forum, and there's several other venues that'll be out there, so you can learn about the candidates, so that we're not hand restricting people. We're hoping to get to a number of matters that deal with Palo Alto's business community. I've already explained the ground rules to the candidates. There's simply this, if I can say them quickly. Everybody's going to have an opening statement, that'll be 90 seconds. Everybody's gonna, we're going to ask a group of questions that we've pre-scripted. Everybody will get 60 seconds to answer those. Everybody will get a closing statement, that'll be about 60 seconds. We have wonderful timekeepers over here, that the candidates know, they'll show a sign when we get to about 20 seconds left, so that they know that they need to wrap up. I'm not sure if we passed any cards out. Okay, there's some cards in the back, we'll pass those out. If people have questions that you want to write down, we'll have some people collect them after we're done with the Chamber questions, and then we will, we'll have some people try and sort them, and we'll see how many we can get through. Some of that depends on how quickly people answer some of these questions, and how much time it takes between candidates answering questions. While the questions are being asked, or looked at to be decided on, we have some real quick flash questions. I think they're fun, you should get some, and all you have to do is give a one-word response to them. So that's basically the structure of what we're going to do. We're hoping that we end somewhere around 7:30, 7:45, so we'll leave a few minutes. The room is available till 8 o'clock, so some of you might want to talk with individual candidates, maybe ask them a little bit more about some of the responses they gave. So that's an overview of what we're going to do. Now, why don't we get started? So, and we have all the candidates here, except Katie Cossey. Katie has a Human Relations Commission meeting tonight, and she needs to attend it, I think she's presenting at it. So she left us with a statement, and after we go through the opening statements, so the candidates are here, I'll read her statement, so everybody at least has a little idea about who Katie is. Okay, so why don't we start, and I think we'll just go down the row. Everybody has a mic, looks like the mic's turned on. We're going to start with Henry. And Henry, you've got 90 seconds to tell people something about yourself.
I'm Henry Etzschutz. I'm an innovation scholar, and I was in quiet retirement when Stanford University took over Oak Creek Apartments where I live, and said, "We're going to push all the seniors out." Well, we called a meeting, we pushed back, we organized a petition drive, and Stanford relented. We're still there, and we want to stay. But we know that that's not the answer. The answer is large-scale affordable housing. New Oak Creeks built on top of the Stanford Shopping Center. Affordable housing for Stanford students, for the seniors, for all the people who want to live in Palo Alto at affordable rates. There's no point doing business in Palo Alto if you can't live here, so that's why I'm here tonight. Other issues are underground the railroad, get rid of Suicide Alley, keep unbuilt lands unbuilt, make the airport back to the wetlands, move the airport to Moffett Field, where it belongs. So I have a lot of ideas that I'd like to tell you about, but my most important one is that I will be a strong voice for seniors and renters on the Palo Alto City Council. Put an innovation scholar on the City Council of the hometown of innovation. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Thank you for staying on time. So next up is Pat Burt.
Good evening. Many of you know me, but I thought I'd take a moment to share a little bit more about my personal background, and before we get into all the many policy issues that I'm impassioned about. I grew up in greater Santa Clara County. First hometown was Gilroy, and then Sunnyvale. Both my parents were teachers, my mom a kindergarten teacher, my father a high school football coach. I didn't start working in Palo Alto until I was nine, when I started selling peanuts at Stanford Stadium, and then worked at the co-op markets here throughout college. And Sally and I moved here in 1980. We had our business just up the road in Redwood City and San Carlos for a long while, and over that career in technology manufacturing, I took a great deal of focus on environmental policy. Spent 25 years at regional, federal, and state level. When I got involved in local matters, it was because a neighborhood group was just forming in my neighborhood in University South, and we had an issue of Palo Alto Housing Corp- oh, Palo Alto Medical Foundation? Yeah, okay. Leaving, and we created the Sofa Area Plan in Heritage Park, Historic Preservation, Daycare Center, and a wonderful affordable housing project out of that. After that, I've spent the past 25 years on Planning Commission and City Council.
Great, thank you for being on time. Okay, next up, George Liu, who's a planning commissioner. I'll start mentioning people's backgrounds.
Thank you, Vic, and thank you, everyone, for giving me the chance to talk about my campaign. So by background, I grew up in Milbrae, that's around 25 minutes away from here, but I was always pulled to Palo Alto. I came here every weekend for Chinese school, I came out as a teenager to hang out with friends on university, but also one of my formative experiences in Palo Alto was constantly visiting open houses, because my parents, as first-generation immigrants, wanted my brother and I to go to the best possible schools and have the best possible opportunities. They really wanted us to go to Paly or Gunn. That didn't actually pencil out, and that really informs how we think about housing affordability, but also the potential and the opportunities in Palo Alto. The selfish reason why I'm running is because of small business vitality. After I attended Stanford, I worked along Calav, and I loved the businesses, I loved the community, and I moved back. I now live a couple blocks from Calav, and it's been sad to see vacancies accumulate and then stay vacant. A big part of that is the Palo Alto process. We aren't responsive to local businesses or residents, we overcomplicate things, and we can't make practical decisions quickly. I'm running for a more vibrant, more livable, and more responsive Palo Alto for all residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Doria Suma, who's also, actually, we're going to go through a number of planning commissioners.[965.76][965.76](LAUGHING) Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and spending this time, and thank you to the Chamber for organizing it. So my name is Doria Suma, and I actually grew up in Chicago. I moved here 38 years ago to be with my husband when his consulting job in Chicago was ending, and he kind of said, "Well, you know, what should we do?" And I said, "Well, I guess I could move to California if it's okay." And I loved Palo Alto ever since I got here. I was really, really ready for a change. I had gone to school in Chicago, and kind of graduated from the Art Institute, and was kind of struggling figuring out what to do, and being here was a breath of fresh air. I really fell in love with the people and the flora and fauna, the open spaces, the city itself. We rented, he was finishing his PhD but also working in business, and so we rented when we first got here. Then we bought a condo downtown, and then we bought a house in the College Terrace community. And it turned out that the choice of that neighborhood was a pivotal part of my life, because after 9/11, I decided literally to take a step back from what I had been doing, which was working in independent feature film production, and I got involved with my community association, and I was involved with very early attempts to have a traffic calming. One thing led to another in our neighborhood, and I got involved on city boards and commissions. I've been on appointed boards and commissions for 17 years, most recently the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Keith, do I pronounce this right? Reckdahl?
Reckdahl.
Reckdahl, who's also a current planning commissioner.
Also on the Planning Commission, yes. My wife and I bought our house 28 years ago in Palo Alto. It's been a really good 28 years. 12 years ago, my kids were really big consumers of parks, really big consumers of recreation programs, so I decided to join the Parks and Rec Commission. And then from that, then I eventually moved on to the Planning and Transportation. I've worked on the Fries Project, I've worked on the Housing Element Work Group, and also on the grade separation for trains, and also managed the campaign for Measure K, which funds a lot of very good causes within the city. Two years ago, I ran that. But when I was on the Parks and Rec, I represented the Commission on the Fries development, and that was really a lost opportunity, because the neighbors came in saying that they wanted density, they wanted affordable housing, they just wanted to make it a livable neighborhood, and we failed them. Instead, most proposals were cramming as many people as we could in there without worrying about the quality of life of those new residents. And Palo Alto has a wonderful quality of life, and we really want to make that for both old residents and new residents. So housing really will be the biggest issue of the campaign, not just because the housing is imbalanced with our job situation, but also that the state has given us a 6,000-unit allocation. That's huge. And how we do that is going to really change how we do Palo Alto. If we do it right, and we build the right housing in the right location, we can make it more vital. If we do it wrong and just build willy-nilly...
Great, thank you, Keith. Next up is Ann Krebs, who's a Park and Recreation Commissioner.
Hi, everybody, I'm Ann Krebs, and I am not on the Planning Commission, thank you very much. I'm on the Park and Recreation Commission. So pleased that the Chamber has decided to do this event. I'm a longtime Chamber member myself, and I've, over the years, I've had great partnerships with the Chamber. Many of you might remember Leave Your Car at Home Day, the Palo Alto Jazz Festival for three years in the Baylands, the Stanford Centennial Parade, and I have been the proud winner of the Palo Alto Tall Tree Award and the Athena Award. So back to, I'm a California kid, and I did pick apricots when I was five years old. I made my first quarter doing that in Saratoga. I went to Palo Alto schools in California, in the Bay Area, ended up at Menlo Atherton, Foothill College, and then Stanford University. So, and I've lived here for over 50 years. So why am I running? I'm a longtime Park and Recreation Commissioner, and I got very frustrated at the progress that we were making on our master plan. We did some good things, but we didn't do them quickly enough. We need to do better, and we need to speed up to get things done. So a great example is Cubberly. We've had three master plans since 1991, and we still have the same building. So, my priorities quickly are housing for everybody, getting things done, no delayed and unfinished projects, opportunities and access, I love those words, and working together with the residents, the business community, Stanford, Palo Alto Unified School District, and the City of Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Should I say it this way, Carly, you're another planning commissioner? Carly Templeton is next.
Carrie.
Carrie, sorry.
I'm so sorry, thank you. Hi, everybody, I'm Carrie Templeton, and I'm running for Palo Alto City Council. I am a planning commissioner, and it's wonderful to be here with my colleagues, so I get to serve with regularly, and some colleagues who I don't often get to sit with, that are on other planning commissions, or other commissions or the council already. So what I want to tell you about myself that would be relevant to many lovely entrepreneurs and business people in this room, is I grew up, I actually grew up out of state, I grew up outside of Atlanta in a lovely little forest, and it was a beautiful town, we were sort of a lower-middle-class family there. My father was an entrepreneur, he had a business creating industrial robots, which were really neat, and my weekend activities were hanging out at the shop with him and learning how things work, playing with his CNC machine, watching him do designs, and it was really a fun time to get to spend with him, but also to learn about the way engineers think. And my mother was an office manager and very different thinker, and I grew up to be a project manager, often for engineers. So you can see I combined both of those skills into my career. After Atlanta, I moved to Germany for a few years, and then was homesick and wanted to come back to the U.S. And my husband said, "Well, we can go to the U.S., but it's going to be out west," and that's how we ended up in Palo Alto, and we have been so happy. We've been here for almost 20 years now, lived next door to you two for a little while, and then moved over to Bear and Park.
And I think we're at stop.
All right, we'll stop there. To be continued. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. And not last, or not least, though he will be last, is current mayor Greer Stone. Is your mic on, Greer?
Nope, but good teamwork.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for being here. Thank you to the Chamber for organizing this event. My name is Greer Stone. I have the honor of being your mayor for 2024. I'm also a public school teacher, and I've been serving on the Palo Alto City Council for the last four years. I have been such a Palo Alto person my entire life. I was raised here, went to school at Duvernac, Green, graduated from Paly. I've taught in our schools, taught at JLS, Gunn, Paly as well. I've been serving in a variety of roles in Palo Alto City Government for over the past 10 years. I started at the age of 23 on the Palo Alto Human Relations Commission. I had a little more hair then, not too much more, but a little bit more. Then served on the Santa Clara County Human Rights Commission, and then was fortunate enough to be able to win a seat on the Palo Alto City Council in 2020. I've led on several issues over the past several years that I've been really proud of, including affordable housing, championing to get our housing element certified, leading on climate, public safety, and of course, helping our economy recover coming out of the pandemic. Much more to do, and I know we all agree on that. In this issue, I'm really focusing on things like housing, especially affordable housing, youth mental health and well-being, an initiative that I started on my very first night as mayor in January, hoping to talk more about that later, climate, as well as Palo Alto Connect. So glad to be here and explain my vision for all of you.
Thank you. Now's the real test, because I have a statement from Katie Cossey, and let's see if I can do it in 90 seconds.[1541.73][1541.73](LAUGHING) Let's see if I can honor my own rules. Here's what Katie says. Hello, everyone, thank you so much to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting us tonight. I unfortunately cannot join you tonight, as I have a commission meeting where I will be presenting on our local economy. I am a lifelong Palo Alto resident and a proud graduate of Aloney, JLS, and Paly. I grew up frequenting many of the local businesses our city was known for, such as the Palo Alto Sports Shop and Toy World, that have been closed. I'm interested in creating a community where the local businesses that shape our neighborhood can thrive. I currently serve on the Palo Alto Human Relations Commission, and I professionally work with city government on their street infrastructure, making streets safe to walk and bike. You can learn more about my campaign at katiecosseyforcouncil.com. Now, did I do that in less than 90 seconds? Okay, as I mentioned to everybody before, we're going to move on now, and I'm going to ask some questions. Ask a question, each of the candidates will answer. We'll start with Henry, and then we'll work our way down, and then the second question, we'll start with Pat, and so on and so forth. And these questions have been provided by the Chamber. So the first question is, this is a process question. For years, the Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce has heard from a range of businesses that it's challenging to do business in Palo Alto compared to other cities. The question is, in your opinion, do you think the City of Palo Alto makes it easier to do business here, and why or why not? So it's a question of how easy it is to do business in Palo Alto. And Henry, we'll start with you, as I said, and you have 60 seconds.
Well, this is the home of some of the greatest startups and companies that the world has ever seen, so I can't say we don't know how to do business in Palo Alto. That's our business. Our business is knowledge. Creating business is out of knowledge, and we do it the best in the world, and everyone comes here to learn from us, and that's what I teach. I teach innovation. I've just come back from China, where I've been teaching about what we do in Palo Alto. But we have a lot of problems in Palo Alto, but one of them isn't knowing how to do business. Our problem is how to find housing, how to put our business sense, our VC sense, into building affordable housing, reuse the shopping center, build high in a few places and keep the rest of Palo Alto green, build an urban forest on San Antonio, not Bronx-ification's stubby apartment houses. Go high and green and keep the rest of Palo Alto unbuilt.
Great, thank you, Henry. Next up.
Thank you. So yes, we do have a problem with the ease of doing business in Palo Alto, particularly for retailers. We've, over the last two years, addressed a lot of the issues on the home side of streamline, on solar permitting, and on now on approvals for renovations, but we have not done it yet on streamlining for retail business. When the opportunity, I was, a year and a half ago, Retail Ad Hoc Committee of the Council was created. I wasn't on it. When an opening came about a few months ago, I jumped at it. You may have read in the press that the first meeting, this was the topic that I drove, and we're determined to break through on that, and that being a next part of our streamlining. But it's more than just that permitting. We have to create an environment that makes it attractive for businesses in a changing retail environment. Anybody here who doesn't purchase on Amazon, please raise your hand. Anybody here who doesn't purchase on Amazon, please raise your hand. But we all have changed our patterns. We have fewer workers in the office, so we need to change the retail environment to make it really attractive.
Great. Thank you, Pat. George, next up.
Doing business in Palo Alto should be easy. We have an amazing population. We have a wealthy population. We have...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We have an amazing population. We have great infrastructure. We have travelers. We have Stanford, but we make things uniquely hard. Just some case studies on zoning. We, for example, banned Formula Retail on Cal Ave. How are we going to fill the bank of the West Space, which is potentially well-suited for a bank, potentially well-suited for a pharmacy, if we can't get a large, significant tenant there? When the nut house was trying to redevelop, the Historic Resources Board said that the parking lot might potentially be a historic resource, because it was the first Safeway parking lot. On permitting, we've seen restaurants fully built out, ready for customers, stay empty for months because we couldn't actually give them an occupancy permit. We couldn't approve them quickly enough. We have to really simplify and really prioritize supporting businesses.
Thank you, George. Doria?
Um, well, wow, that's loud. I do think there are things we can do to improve, make it easier for businesses in Palo Alto. George mentioned the problem with Formula Retail on California Avenue. That is specific to Cal Ave, and I do think we made that too strict when we decided what we wanted there. And I, but I don't think there have been a lot of Formula Retail applications that were, that people tried for and were sent away. That being said, I think that's one thing we can really do, and I think, we also talked about it, we focused a lot this year at the Planning Commission on retail issues. I also think that the definition of what qualifies for retail or retail-like needs to be broadened. There were occasions when people had innovative ideas for what kind of store it would be, and it didn't fit into a category, so they might have not got very far at the development center. Seventeen years ago, the first appointed commission board or committee that I sat on was a Development Center Customer Advisory Group, and for years we did that, and we made progress, but it seems to have slid backwards again operationally.
Great. Thank you. Keith?
A short answer is yes. There's things that we can do to improve the, the retail situation, but we're not sitting on our, on our hands right now. The retail, the, okay. Sorry. The council's working on this right now, the Retail Ad Hoc. The PTC's been looking at this this past year, and we just voted last month to, to relax a lot of zoning, make it simpler to start, and less restrictions on the type of business that can go different places. But also, we can do more streamlining. Quite often, if you open a business, you have to have multiple applications for different types of permits, and we can consolidate those and have fewer applications and fewer paperwork. So that certainly is a possibility to do further streamlining. But the other thing that is really necessary is improved streetscapes, improved environment. That's something that the city can do, that city has control over. We can't control what individual businesses decide to open, but we can make it a more attractive area to open their businesses there.
So one, one quick comment I'll make before Anne, you start, is we used to have a rule of thumb when I was speaking at things, to try and treat the mic as if it was a snow cone, meaning keep it as close to you as you can so people in the back can hear. If you can't hear, if, raise your hands in the back and so that we know what's going on, because I, I can hear up here. I can't tell if you can hear in the back. Okay, Anne, you're next up.
Okay, so the snow cone. So can you hear me in the back now? All right, that's great. Well, I think like everybody in the room, we'd all like to see the spaces that are empty being filled, and I think that we can do that by working together and removing some of the issues and some of the things that get in the way. I'd like to see us figure out a timeline to put on every permit and say, hey, this has to be done by a certain time, and we need to move on. We can't continue to postpone decisions, and I think that it's gonna be really important coming out, really coming out of COVID, because I still believe we're not out of COVID, and I think that the effects of COVID are gonna go on for a long time. So I think we really need to be creative and get, get people in the retail businesses and work together. There's a lot of smart people in this room, and there've been a lot of good suggestions up here. So I think we can do it together.
Thank you. Carrie?
All right, so I will start with saying that I've been on the Planning and Transportation Commission for six years, and we have seen, as my colleagues mentioned, a lot of projects go through the Palo Alto process. And what I've observed is, is we need to be a little more specific about it being hard to do business in Palo Alto, because what it is is slow and therefore costly. And you've heard a couple of examples here around the bureaucracy and the different kind of pushback you're getting, or you're getting approvals that are sequential, but they're spaced out, and you don't have any way to do them in parallel. So I do think we could improve our process while still having a good quality outcome for our business people. Thank you very much.
Greer?
We do have to make it much easier to be able to do business in Palo Alto. I've been privileged to be able to serve as the Chamber Liaison, I think, for my entire, for my entire first term, and have not, had an opportunity to work with Charlie and, and many of you. And a lot of this is being able to understand from the people who are impacted by these decisions, which are many of you in the room, how we can improve the processes. Streamlining is going to be a big piece to it, making sure that we're having consistent policies in place in different shopping areas. Right now, there's a bit of a patchwork of, of kind of different, different requirements, which makes it more complicated for business owners to understand what's, what's allowed. You know, one, helping a local business here in Midtown, when they first started out in the Midtown Shopping Center, they were, they were, it was taking them, I think, six-plus months just to get their sign approved. I had to then work with staff to be able to streamline that process, and I kind of went back to them saying, we can't have individual council members being the ones making this happen. It needs to be staff. So we've approved an Economic Development Manager, who's now gonna be making, working to help connect businesses with, with our staff.
Great. Thank you. I notice people are filling out cards, so you all haven't, have had an opportunity, I think, to get a card and write your questions if you have it, and I think we're, there's cards in the back if somebody missed, and we're collecting them, and we'll try and see if we can get to a number of your questions. So we'll start, Pat, with you. It's a housing question. Everybody knows that housing is a, a main topic these days. As somebody who wrote this question said, it's even part of the presidential debate, and talk about housing at the national level. So starting again with you, Pat, what's your position on the construction of housing in Palo Alto's business districts, including the construction of housing on city-owned parking lots?
So when our first version of the housing element came forward, I hadn't had an opportunity to wade in until it came to the council. We had to submit it, but one of the strongest arguments I made was too much of the housing redirected towards San Antonio Road Corridor. More should be in our two downtowns along El Camino and in the Lower Research Park up against California Avenue. So I've supported that. We're going forward. As you may know, we just recruited for an advisory group for the downtown housing plan. It's very much what we should be doing. It will bring vitality to the downtowns. As I mentioned, we have a transformation. We have fewer workers there, but more people residing downtown will not only bring more shoppers, but more vitality, and vitality breeds vitality. So I very much support it. I do think that we have opportunities and a necessity to find locations for affordable housing. If we don't provide 2,000-plus affordable housing units by, in the next eight years, we will lose our zoning authority.
Thank you. Everybody's staying on time. This is great. And make sure, George, you got the mic close to you. People make sure you have your mics.
Yeah. Call me out if I'm not speaking loudly enough, or if you can't hear me. Absolutely full stop. We need more housing, and business districts are a really appropriate and beneficial place to put them. We need housing in transit-oriented corridors especially, so that means downtown and Cal Ave, but also El Camino, and also the Shopping Center, and also the Research Park. We need a wide range of housing. We need housing that's mixed income. We need housing that's affordable, and we really need to actually realize some of the promises we have in the housing element to build more housing. When downtown parking lots originally came up, we backtracked a little bit. We said that we would move forward with housing on a couple of parking lots, and the state actually pushed back on us. And so now we have a renewed commitment to build more housing on more parking lots, and we have a renewed commitment to find alternative sites if those parking lots don't pan out. Having a real, that's what having a real commitment to housing looks like. We need to do, make moves like that and realize the problems of our housing element. Thank you.
Thank you. You're up, Doria. We were talking at the beginning. We said there's always a technological thing that comes in that causes a delay. So you're the lucky winner.
Sorry about that. So I think that there's two things we need to keep looking for in housing, and that is a variety of unit types and most, foremost affordability. Affordability is the real housing problem in California for people. It's just too expensive. I think I was one of the first people I ever heard say, and this was a long time ago, on the Comp Plan Rewrite Group, that we should have housing in the Stanford Research Park, that we didn't need more office there. And it was considered radical at the time, but I think we've all come around to believe that. And as to housing over city-owned parking lots, I think that's fine as long as we, as we remember to retain the existing parking and having the housing above it. We also have a commitment to businesses that paid into the housing, I mean, parking funds downtown. So I think it's important to keep those. So yes, to Stanford Research Park, yes to downtown housing. As to downtown, you know, mixed-use areas in our, oh, C zones, I'll just fix that.
That's, the sixty-second thing is tough to manage sometimes. So Keith, make sure you keep it close to you.
Yes, I'll keep it up. Yeah, a big yes for housing downtown and Cal Ave. Those are really good places to live. You can walk downstairs and go out to eat. You can walk over the Aquarius and watch a movie, all without getting in your car. So it'd be a really attractive place to live. It's near transit, so if you live in San Francisco, you can just walk to the train. There's so many advantages, and plus it helps out our retail, so there's a lot of advantages to that. And I agree with Pat, the housing element overlooked that, and I think that was something that we have to work on. For the affordable housing, the biggest problem is finding the land and buying the land. These parking lots that we have downtown, we already own the land. That's half the battle right there. So building affordable housing above those parking lots is a really good idea.
Thank you. Anne, you're next up.
Thank you very much. Well, yes, very much. I agree with housing, but housing for all income levels, affordable housing for sure. I like the Stanford Research Park. I like the downtown and Cal Avenue for housing, and at the same time, I wouldn't be a good Recreation Commissioner if I didn't mention that as we're building the housing, we need to make sure we have enough parks and indoor facilities for kids to play, like gyms, so that everybody can enjoy their life in Palo Alto.
Thank you so much. I would, I want to think back to a book I read when I first joined the Blandon Commission, which is The Death and Life of American Cities by Jane Jacobs. It's a really great book, and one of the things it talks about is the, the utility of having businesses, homes, and parking, and all of those things together in a way that can benefit all the different parties involved. And so I think that's my answer to, should we be developing our city parking that's right now just one flat ground-level story into more parking to support our businesses and homes on top of that? I think it would benefit everybody, and then it would also keep the area active and reduce crime as a result. Thank you.
We need more housing in our, in our business districts, and that's gonna be able to help address some of our vacancy rate issues. We got about a fifteen percent vacancy rate in downtown, about a nine-point-six percent vacancy rate on California Avenue, and so much of that has now been driven by post-pandemic work-from-home patterns that have changed. We have about a hundred thousand square foot reduction in demand for office space in Palo Alto post-COVID because of work-from-home habits. That's the equivalent of the Charleston Shopping Center and the Midtown Shopping Center. We need to get more customers and boost that demand. Housing's gonna be able to do that. A hundred, a hundred percent affordable housing on downtown parking lots is going to do that. We've identified six lots for that, and I agree with Commissioner Suma. Really important that we are replacing that parking, because people are still gonna be using cars when they're shopping in downtown and California Avenue. We want to make sure that those areas remain a magnet for people to know that they're gonna be able to have parking when they're there, and I'm a big advocate for more events as well to pull people out, to get them to the shopping areas.
I'm gonna make, I'm not gonna do this too often, but I'll make one editorial comment. For those of you, since Janadi Shire is here, for those of you who don't read his articles in the Palo Alto Weekly, he does a great job of covering a lot of information around topics like this, and I think it's, for your education, as it has been for mine, I think it's worth reading his, his articles on topics like this where he covers a number of issues. I was just reading one this morning. Okay, let's go on, and George, we'll start with you. This is a vacancy tax question. Could easily just be a business tax question because of the fact that Palo Alto's businesses have a plethora of taxes. Oh, excuse me, Henry. My mistake. I'm, I'm so used to the chorus line.
So I'll dance last, but hopefully best, because I have a plan. Everybody's in favor of affordable housing, but how do you actually make it affordable? You have to do it at scale and on free land. Stanford has the land. We must partner with Stanford, and I'm saying that as someone who's been an adversary in working to keep their plans from taking over Oak Creek. But they face the same problems as we do, but they have the land. So we must work with them and with the VC community that has the money. Right now, they're gonna take that money and go to Solano County. Let's bring them back home and build university city. Ten thousand living, working lofts, because in-person retail isn't coming back. It's gonna be a niche part of larger developments. All the shopping centers are disappearing. That's gonna happen to the Stanford Shopping Center, too. So let's build on the parking lots and garages and make that university city. Ten thousand units, not two thousand, ten thousand. That'll solve the problem of affordable housing and in-person retail. Thank you.
And excuse me for missing you. I'm getting used to, this, this is flowing pretty well, I think, right? And so I don't even think I need to call your names out anymore. We'll just let it go right through, because everybody's handing it off really well. So this question is, as I mentioned, a vacancy tax question. Retail vacancy tax has recently been brought up as a way to address retail storefrontage vacancies in Palo Alto's retail corridors. The question is, are you in favor of a retail vacancy tax? Why or why not? I think you have it, George.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, our vacancies are extremely high. Like Mayor Stone mentioned, it's around fifteen percent downtown, around ten percent in Cal Ave, and that compares to around three percent in Los Altos. So it's not a foregone conclusion that we can't fill our vacancies. Vacancies are, do have negative externalities in themselves. The more vacancies accumulate, the less life there is in the street, and potentially more vacancies after that. I would study a vacancy tax, and I would consider it with an open mind. Right now, I'm not willing to commit to saying yes or no on this issue. I think rent is one really important part, and vacancy tax would do incentivize us to reduce rent. But with departures and work in our daytime population, with the extremely high building costs and lending rates of actually fitting out a, maybe currently empty shell of a, of a building, it's not actually economical for businesses for businesses to move in even with a vacancy tax. So I'd carefully consider this issue on council.
Okay. I think taxes like vacancy, vacancy taxes are really tricky to get right. So I agree with George that we really need to get the right tax and the details really will matter. Anecdotally, when you talk to people about retail shop owners and small bus, local businesses, the problem they have are the rents. The rents are really high in Palo Alto and they often relocate to a town nearby, to Mountain View or Menlo Park, where they bizarrely find even more affordability in the rent. So I don't know how to address that, and I'm not sure at this time that a vacancy tax can fairly address that. But I'm open to it and willing to look into the details because I don't think you can just say, oh yeah, vacancy tax now. It's the details of how you do something like that really matter. And it's really important to know that the price of rental here is very high for people.
Yeah, I understand the attractiveness of a vacancy tax because especially University Avenue, we have high vacancies but also very high rent. Even with all the vacancies, we're paying, the landlords are charging more today than they did before COVID. And so that's troubling with all those vacancies that the rents haven't gone down. But that said, I'm, I'm really leery of unintended consequences. And if you put a vacancy tax on, will you get lower-quality shops? And the landlords want high-quality, long-term tenants, and I think the people, the residents do, too. So I'm not necessarily opposed to a vacancy tax, but I'd be concerned about unintended consequences.
Thank you. I am not in favor of a vacancy tax at this point. I would rather see the landlords and the potential tenants and the community come together to talk about different kinds of stores that go into spaces and expand the kinds of stores and kinds of retail that we have and see if that would work. So it's more of a carrot-than-a-stick approach.
Exactly the words I was thinking as well. I am much, no, no, it's, I wasn't laughing other than sharing a brain. So I think that I, I oppose the vacancy tax as well, but I could be convinced if that's what the, the business owners feel would be attractive. But generally, I do prefer the carrot to the stick as well. And I think that our responsibility as leaders of the city and, and partners with the, the chamber are to find ways to make our city more attractive. And I think having a vacancy tax is not going to make our city more attractive. Having a shorter time to, to launching your business would make it more attractive. Working closer with our business owners would make it more attractive. Trying to, to make the obstacles go away would make it more attractive to do business in Palo Alto. So I think that's the better way to go. Thank you.
At this point, I'm, I'm keeping an open mind to this situation. Palo Alto, we're not the only ones with high vacancy rates. Downtown Mountain View, I believe, has about a 20% vacancy rate. The, the rate of downtown retail is incredibly expensive, $75 to $80 per square feet. And I think on average of spaces vacant for about eight and a half months in, in Palo Alto. I, I'm worried about if we put on too much pressure, what does that do for those landlords? Do they then start renting out those properties to, to, to potential business owners that, or, or businesses that might not be the best fit? We don't want to see that either. And one thing I've been thinking about, is there a way to be able to use some of those spaces, maybe for the city to be able to help promote, help promote kind of startup businesses within those space or kind of pop-up stores, to be able to find a way, to be able to kind of bridge the time when it's taking one of these landlords to find a permanent resident. Seen other cities do similar things. It might be able to help us reduce our vacancy and, and promote new business in the community.
Now it's you, Henry. This time, we won't miss you.
Thank you. I don't see the point of beating landlords on the head with a tax. I don't see the point of inviting chain stores into Palo Alto when they're going bankrupt everywhere else on the peninsula. With one exception, I'd invite Barnes &amp; Noble into the former Renaissance Hardware Store in downtown Palo, in, on University Avenue. That's the kind of place we need. That'll be open in the evening and it becomes a social gathering place. We need to have a concept for retail because it's going to, it's disappearing and it's not going to come back in the old way. So hey on why, small town in Wells, full of empty stores. What do they do? They created a cluster, a cluster of used bookstores, and people now come from all over the world. We need to come up with an innovative concept. That's why I say bring an innovation scholar onto the city council and think big and think fresh.
You're on.
My first priorities would be to streamline the permitting and then to mend our retail protection ordinance, not break it and abolish it. So we can induce a lot of retail to come through a lot of those kinds of measures as well as really investing in the, in the physical streetscape of our downtowns. That's what further attracts businesses there. That's our next big move that we have to make as a community. This issue on, on the retail protection ordinance came to the planning commission recently. A majority of the commission had a series of, of recommendations to reduce the locations on it and to liberalize what, what sorts of retail can be there. Unfortunately, George and Kerry voted to abolish the retail protection ordinance and allow offices to compete head-to-head with retail. And I don't know any retailer who thinks they can survive well competing against high-tech office space.
Okay, so that, that completes that question. Here's the last question that the chambers provided. We've, we've got some questions we're going to ask from attendees. We'll probably still do.
You have the lightning round.
I, don't worry. I was going to say, I'm not going to, even though we said we'd use the lightning round while people sorted through and figured out which questions, we're going to use the lightning round anyway, just because it's fun. Okay, we're going to start with you, Doria. And this question is, it's, it's one of those classic questions. The first 100 days, if elected, are there any specific policies or actions you'd pursue in support of the business community in your first 100 days in office?
Sure. I think supporting the business community is important. And, and I'm really, I live very close to Cal Ave and I consider that my downtown, and I really want to help Cal Ave. So I do think relaxing some of the rules that Pat just mentioned regarding retail, descriptions of retail and stuff, I think that would help the most. But I don't want to get rid of retail across the town. One of the recommendations we had from this consultant that I thought was the very poorest was to get rid of the retail requirement altogether on El Camino, where the vacancy rate is the lowest in the city. And that doesn't make sense because the vacancy rate is lowest. And it also doesn't make sense when so many people in various neighborhoods south of Page Mill consider that they're downtown and need something to walk to also. So I think rightsizing, there may be some evidence that we could right-size some of the business districts and allow more uses on the fringe that were not strictly retail or retail-like. But I don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater.
I mentioned earlier that PTC has been working on this, the council of retail has been working on this. We need to continue. We're not done streamlining or improving the business cycles. The streetscape on Cal Ave, we have to deal with that and expedite it as fast as we can. Same with downtown, make it look fresh and new and make businesses want to come in. But the other thing is that we really need to have better interaction with the business community. I think the council works best when they listen. And we need to understand what are your problems? And are we solving the problems that you need to solve? Or are we solving the problems that you think, that we think need to be solved? So better communication and better listening by the council is very important.
That was all great, actually. I liked that. So I would say in the first 100 days to move forward faster and get some things done in both business districts, including making it look prettier, cleaning it up, putting some flowers in different places. And we can do this as a community. You know, they used to do barn raising years ago in the Midwest. I can see us doing that on Cal Avenue and University Avenue. Have some fun, have some events, have some parties, and make sure that people come downtown and go to Cal Ave to shop and enjoy themselves.
Thank you, Anne. I think the first 100 days, we could enact some cleanup and public safety things for our city that would make it more walkable. And why that would help the business districts is because if you're walking your kids to school, you're walking back home after. And you can walk past a coffee shop or a retail shop or get your shoes fixed or whatever you need to do. So I would love to see us focus a little bit more on choosing public safety, and that means making streets where incidents are occurring safer by, by improving those intersections, making it time to walk across safer for kids and things like that. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm not going to wait for those 100 days. I'll definitely start right now over the, over the rest of my term and hopefully have the honor to be able to get elected for another term to keep this work up. I think cleaning up downtown, cleaning up California Avenue is critical, making sure people feel that they are safe while they're shopping or, or work, walking through the parking lots. Palo Alto has been rated the safest, the safest kind of suburban city in California, but there's a perception that our residents are not as safe. And of course, perception matters. And so I've been working very close with the chief of police and our police department, make sure that they have the resources that they need to be able to keep us safe and actually have officers on patrol. We need to have more events. Carroll's Third Thursday has been an incredible success. I have this vision of a Palo Alto connect where we're going to be able to continue to supplement the work that Carroll's doing and add on additional events. We are exporting Palo Altons to surrounding cities to go to their events and shop at their downtowns. We need to bring that business back here in Palo Alto.
Going right through. So George, you'll be last.
First 100 days, let's call together the leadership of the business community, the university, and the city and brainstorm solutions. This is what Mike Miller did in 94 when we had the recession in tech. He called together the leadership and they brainstormed, they came up with new ideas for networking, and that became the next wave of growth in the valley. So let's do something like that. Let's have public brainstorming led by the leadership of the region, bring together university business and government to collaborate and cooperate. That's how we can solve the problems, come up with new ideas, and take them forward.
What I'd do in the first 100 days is continue what I've pushed in the last 100 days. First is streamlining the retail permitting. Second is going forward with the amendments to the retail protection ordinance to liberalize it. And, and third, we've, we've heard about cleaning up the downtowns. Well, we need to go forward with those earlier steps to revitalize them and, and make them more pleasant and active. But already, we've done the cleanup. If those of you who haven't noticed it, this started because three months ago, when we had this discussion, the city manager and I went back and forth. And I was demanding that we move immediately on the cleanup part that I've heard from businesses down there. And he said, I think what I hear from you is you want to study on how to do these near-term things. And I said, no, I want action, not another study. And low and behold, that's what we've gotten. And, and if you've probably seen the effect of, of that already downtown, we need to do more.
Thank you. I'm running on a strong mandate to simplify processes and support small businesses. I will bring that mandate forward. With our retail discussions with our retail consultants, we are pursuing some streamlining, but we actually can go further. Other cities have already shipped dozens of retail ordinance cleanups in San Francisco, in Santa Monica, and I would push us to do more. I would also prioritize University, Cal Ave, but also Midtown and also El Camino as really first-class public spaces. We need cleanliness, we need safety, we need to rethink our streetscapes and make them as inviting, clean, family-friendly as possible. We need to actually get a permanent parklet ordinance that works for all businesses and actually reduces the uncertainty and cost and delay that we currently impose. So really, it's about simplification and it's a bad investment.
And I think we've gone through all four questions. And guess what, folks? This is a good group. We did it with five minutes to spare. So, well, and because we have, this is Palo Alto, by the way, for people who don't understand, we have a great group of questions from you, which doesn't surprise me, having served in office before and know how, how bright and involved this community is. Before we get to those, because I know Charlie's dying for this, he, he really wants the lightning round. So the light, the lightning round, I, I'm going to change it up a little bit, too, to, to surprise you. The lightning round is, I've got three questions here. I will ask, we'll, we'll start, I think we'll start again with you, Henry, to keep it simple. We'll go down. And the, I, I've got three questions, and your answer to those questions will be no more than five words, but hopefully one word. So you're going to have to be on your toes. You can notice even seasoned council member Pat Burt smiling at this idea. But here's, here's the first question, and it's, it's not on my list. Just by a show of hands, so we're going to do this collectively. Show of hands, who knows who the current president of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors is? Who knows the name of the, George? John Goldman. John? John's in the back. And we're going to have to give, if there's an extra taco or something, we're going to have to reward you, George, for that. Okay, are we ready, Henry? The first question's this.
Ready.
In, in five words, but hopefully one. Describe your leadership style in one word.
Consensus-building.
Okay, good, quick answer. Ah, we said we could go to maybe five. Okay, Pat, and we'll work down.
Collaborative, problem-solving.
Pragmatic and thoughtful.
Inclusive.
Collaborative.
Collaborative and getting to the end of the pool.
From a former Olympic swimmer.
Yeah, I think collaborative has been taken, so I'm going to go not a bully.
Community-focused, collaborative, and I think decisive? That was a joke. That was a joke.
That's an interesting way of phrasing that, but, okay. Maybe just to, to break up the who starts, we'll go with you, Pat, on the next question. What's a business in Palo Alto that you wish we had?
The New Varsity.
The Nut House or something like it?
A bowling alley for young people.
Litty Coats.
Some Padres Bar and Grill.
I was going to say Antonio's as well. Thank you.
I miss prolific oven.
And we're back to you, Henry.
I think I already said it, Barnes &amp; Noble with Cafe and Daycare Center.
We've got one more question, but how many of you, just by a show of hands, how many of you remember the Varsity Theater back in the day when you could go, and, you know, we were, my wife and I were a young couple with a young child. You could go to the Varsity Theater, for $5 you could get a dinner, and for an extra dollar, you could go see the movie. How many remember that? I'm happy there's some of us left. Okay. Let's see, who are we starting? Who, who, we start with you, George? Looks like you're raring to go. Okay. In feet, what should Palo Alto's In feet, what should Palo Alto's maximum height be for housing?
Contextual, but 60. In standard. Yeah.
If somebody didn't, he said 60 feet, with some context.
It should be the right height in the right place.
Context dependent, but 75.
Context is important, but maybe seven or eight stories.
Us planning commissioners are all going to hedge on this one. I don't know how many words that was. I said we're all going to hedge on that one if we're on the planning commission. You heard the same hedging from all four of us.
Agree. Context matters, certain areas, 85 feet.
Depends where. Billionaires live 50 stories high in New York. Let's do that over the shopping center. But green spaces and urban forest along San Antonio, no building there.
It very much matters in the context and the location. Along the east side of San El Camino, near the research park, 75 feet, elsewhere less.
Okay, let's see what we, how many of your questions we can get through. And I'll try and get through as many as I can. It's dependent on people's answers, you know, how long they are. And when we do that, we'll go for a while, but at 7:20, because I think we're doing well time-wise, 7:20, we'll stop. And each person will be given 60 seconds for a closing statement. And I guess I'll make a couple of wrap-up remarks. So let's start with questions. And let's see, who are we going to start with? Is it Doria or Keith? Okay, first question's this. And again, I love a lot of these questions. Please comment on the challenge of accessibility for child, and then they added in family or elder care in Palo Alto in general and in relationship to Palo Alto's housing plan. So it's a question about accessibility to different forms of care. Child, family, or elder care. Talking about it generally, and then in relationship to the current housing plan.
One of the hard things in Palo Alto is expensive. And it's expensive for everybody. That includes engineers, but also includes the people who take care of us. My parents are both elderly, and finding care in the Midwest is challenging. Out here, it's almost impossible. It's just, any type of nursing, teachers, as Greer can attest, it's very hard to find housing. And what's going to happen is that without affordable housing, we're going to end up with just a bunch of VCs and engineers in Palo Alto, and the rest of the community will be elsewhere. And they'll have to either drive up, or we'll have to drive down there for all, anything that doesn't pay well. The problem is that affordable housing is very expensive to build. And there has to be a funding source. And that's one thing that we have to prioritize, is finding a funding source to make affordable housing realistic and build as much as we can.
Yes, I have had to find both childcare and elder care for my mom. And it was very difficult both times, with my kids and for my elderly mother. And so I think we need to really think about the way that we take care of people in this, in our neighborhood, and really understand what their needs are. I ended up being very fortunate to find a group home for my mother for quite a long time. And that worked out okay for her, but not everybody can do that. I was very fortunate to find good daycare for my children before they went to preschool, but not everybody can do that. And this is something, as a society, we have to really work together and fix. And as again, I like to say, they're all smart people here, and we should really band together and try to figure out a way to get this done.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'm very concerned about this question. A lot of people use this as part of their understanding of whether Palo Alto would be right for them. And it's challenging, not only for people who live here to find somebody local to care for their family members, it's also very difficult for people who work here. And, you know, if they want to have their childcare located near them. So I understand it would be affecting our businesses as well. The way that we went about it was, we tried really hard on our parent networks to find somebody who was cycling off of their current job and nab them before they went to the next thing. But honestly, most people are bringing caregivers from outside the city. And those are commute issues, are contributing to our commute and our emissions and environmental catastrophe that is coming our way. So I think it's really important to think about, that's one of the reasons we needed more affordability of our homes in Palo Alto.
This is an issue really, really close to me. My beautiful wife, Adriana, and I are hoping to start our own family sometime soon. And the cost of healthcare, sorry, the cost of childcare and the ability to find a place locally to have somebody watch children is a challenging issue. I think one of the ways in which that we can address this is ensuring that when we're looking at housing production, we're not just looking at small micro units. It's easy to do because, but that's kind of the focus on these state mandates. A three-bedroom apartment counts the same as a one-bedroom apartment or a small, or even a smaller unit. So making sure we're investing in more multi-generational housing, more multifamily housing. I appreciate that. Keith mentioned teacher affordable housing. Right now, we are working on two teacher housing projects within Palo Alto. One, thanks to Supervisor Joe Semidion, who's championing one on Grant near the courthouse. And there's also one coming forward on El Camino, which is exciting. And out of time.
By the way, our timekeepers are Priscilla, and let me make sure I pronounce it right, Kanika? Who are sitting up in the front here and doing a great job. Thank you. Okay, Henry.
I started out as a young sociologist, community organizer in the 60s, working in Bedford-Stuyvesant. And what people said they wanted was daycare, infant care, so they could go to work. And we organized the first and large 150 children infant and daycare center. So I'm a daycare center organizer. And I'm a senior. And I faced the existential question of being able to live in Palo Alto two years ago, which is how I'm on this table today. We answered that question by pushing back and organizing the residents to fight to stay. So rent cap for seniors. One quarter of your income for rent is what I was taught growing up as the rule of thumb. I think we need to bring that back and make that law, starting with seniors, but then spreading it to everyone. But ultimately, we can only do it by increasing the supply of housing. And we have to do that by partnering with the university, using the shopping center, the research park, and the VC funds, together with the city of Palo Alto, to do this collaboratively.
On the childcare, we have a great history in Palo Alto of an incredible community partner, nonprofit of Palo Alto Community Childcare. This has been a three-way partnership between the city, the school district, and the nonprofit. Unfortunately, in recent years, the district has undervalued Palo Alto Community Childcare. And we need to really apply the pressure on the school district to step forward and be that partner with them and appreciate what an asset they are. They're not the only childcare provider, but they're the largest. And they're a nonprofit serving our community for decades. On other affordable housing, we really do have to have, as a region and a city, incredible investment in this to reestablish the social and the economic balance that makes a healthy community and a healthy economy. That's why, right now, we have three affordable housing projects under construction right now, six more in the pipeline. That's the largest group in decades in Palo Alto, in part because of Measure K that we passed last year.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a huge issue. And I'll be consistent here, we need to grow the supply. So like Councilmember Burt mentioned, we really need to support Palo Alto Community Childcare. They're an amazing organization. We also, we should be actively working to find space for them, with them, with the school district. We also need to permit home childcare, which is, exists in Palo Alto in some cases, but it's a use case we really value and should streamline. We should have incentives for offices to provide childcare for their employees. On seniors, we've struggled with this. From the Maybell Project to ongoing conversations around Palo Alto Commons, we simply need more space for seniors, more affordable space. And we need more housing, full stop. It's not a simple solution of only providing a small number of affordable units for a small number of seniors. We need more housing for workers, medical workers, seniors, and everyone.
Okay. So I think that employers should be providing childcare when they can. And of course, a lot of people are staying home now, choosing to stay home and work and taking care of their kids at the same time, which is really difficult, actually. But I do think that we need to continue to support our senior programs. Mr. O'Jackian mentioned La Camita, which I support as a board member. And I do think we need housing types, all different unit types in housing, to accommodate extended families, people that need to live alone. And those housing units need to be accessible to different persons with different abilities. And sometimes that means a person needs to have a car to get around, and that they shouldn't be prohibited from being in those places. And that we need to provide, in our shopping areas and business areas, accessible parking spots for people. Because community involves all different, is made up of all different kinds of people and with abilities.
And I think, let's see, are you still to go, Keith? Or you started it? Yeah, that's what I remember. Because I was getting ready for Anne. And this next question, which is this, Anne. How would you address the tall buildings proposed where Molly Stone's is now?
First of all, I think that the place, the area that is proposed where Molly Stone's is now for more housing is probably a really good space to put it. It's near transit and it's near retail. That the height that I had heard seems really, really, really big to me. So like 13 stories or something like that, and I think that's too big. I'd like to see it be maybe half that size with retail and housing and parking. And I think it would be a nice addition to California Avenue.
Thank you. I am not in favor of building that tall in that space. I think there's a lot of residences whose line of sight would be affected. And I think that we need to have a more compatible space. I really like Channing House, which is pretty tall. I think it's about 10 stories tall. And that's in a place that has other tall buildings around it. And that seems really compatible for me. So unless we have a plan for California Avenue that incorporates other tall buildings instead of the one- and two-story single-family homes, we'd really need to understand the place of an extremely tall building in that location. Thank you.
As I said before, I think the height of buildings needs to really be contextualized with the buildings around it. City has taken the position that we had a compliant housing element in place because the city council had certified it at the time that that proposal was submitted. So I would propose that we, that we have city staff work with the developer that submitted those plans and said, "Hey, work with us now to be able to fit your project within our newly approved, with our newly approved zoning and regulations in that place. And let's get something built in the short term, rather than seeing this thing play out for a while over any battles that might occur."
Henry, you're next up.
First, they should hire an architect. What I see being proposed are these chunky buildings that looks like where I grew up in the Bronx. I don't think I want to go back to that. I want to go forward to the type of architecture that I showed in my leaflet. High buildings, green, like the building in Brazil. It looks like urban forest where you have these green plants overflowing the buildings. Let's get some architectural competitions here and build innovative housing. Green with daycare centers, build high in a very few places, like the shopping center, and leave other parts totally unbuilt. But we can do much better than what's being proposed.
I think the proposal for 17 stories at Molly Stone's site or 40 stories at the Sunset site is an abomination. That we don't need it. Our downtowns have been jewels because they're human scale. They lend themselves to greater density. We should have more housing there and do it at the right scale and context and make it a beautiful and receptive downtown. A skyscraper does not belong. And this is an abuse of state law that has come forward under this builder's remedy. And I think we should oppose it as best we can. And I think we can do so. There, it's not exempt from environmental law. And there will be considerable legal challenges to projects that are attempting to go forward under this builder's remedy abuse. Thanks.
Just to give people context, the builder's remedy allows certain housing projects that are submitted while we don't have a compliant housing element to bypass local zoning. And so that's how we ended up here with 17 stories. Other cities have responded differently. Other cities have actively and preemptively negotiated and settled with developers. In a builder's remedy context, the developer will ask for everything they want and understand that there's potentially significant legal risk, that there will potentially be years of expensive lawsuits and this, for both the city and the developer to have to fund. And this is an outcome that anyone wants. We should be actively settling and working with the developer so we can get good, quality housing on really the perfect site as quickly as possible in a way that works for the neighborhood.
So I don't support 17 stories at that site. It's out of scale with the rest of what is built up around it. And I also wanted to say that the builder's remedy is, I do not agree with the law. I would align myself with Pat Burt's statements there. But it's, while it's the law, we have to comply with it. But I'm hoping there's a way to reasonably deal with these kinds of applications so that we're not stuck with buildings that are inappropriate in our city. I also wonder about the economics of building that building at 17 stories. We had a developer reduce something that just came to the planning commission last night at the council's recommendation, from five to three stories. And one of the reasons they could do it is because it penciled out economically. The land here is so expensive, it has become commodified. And that I don't even know if it's possible to build at that height and afford it. So no, I don't support it at all.
You know, Molly Stone's is a great place for housing, not 17 stories. It's incompatible with the neighborhood. Skyscrapers are a really expensive way of building housing. The per-unit cost for a skyscraper is much more expensive than a four- or five-story building because they can do that, all wood frames can be much more affordable. We're better off spreading that along Cal Ave and having retail under housing along Cal Ave. That's a much more appropriate way of developing it, and it'll be more affordable. and it'll be more affordable.
Okay, so here's what we're going to do. We're going to shift gears a little bit. We're going to ask one more question from you. And the reason for that is we're going to change the 60-second closing remarks that we said people would get. We'll change that to 90 seconds. So then that way, they have a chance of telling us a little bit more maybe about those things they're interested in or how they want to project themselves to you. So Carrie, we'll start with you with the last question from our attendees. What is your position on the airport expansion?
I don't, I don't think it's needed and I don't support it. But I can go on for 60 more seconds if you guys want.
You don't need to.
So thanks.
Well, since this item is going to be coming to the city council in a relatively short amount of time, I'm not able to take a solid position. I definitely have concerns about, about the project and of course impacts on the environment. But I've been hearing from various residents who are both in support and against. And so I need to withhold my final judgment, of course, until it comes before the city council. But there's definitely concerns about the proposal.
Henry, you're next up.
I wrote the article Ducks Over Ponds. Close the airport, option six, I call it. Move it to Moffett Field where there's two good runways that the FAA wants. Give the ducks the airport. Expand Bixby Park by 100 acres. 2% of the wetlands, expand the wetlands. And let's have the ducks rule the airport.
So fortunately, what's coming to the council is actually a study session and not a decision. So we can weigh in on our perspectives. And my perspective is that we don't need to do anything that will expand the size of planes or the number of planes at the airport. And from what I've seen on the proposals, the ones that would significantly expand the runway are not needed. There may be a very small expansion for safety purposes or to reduce the impact over East Palo Alto. But that's all that we would need to consider to do and all I expect to happen.
I'm opposed to airport expansion. It's bad for the environment. It's bad for our neighbors, given that, neighbors in East Palo Alto, given leaded gas fumes, given safety risks, given that most of the alternatives do involve slight increases in plane sizes and overall traffic. It's bad for our community as well with noise and pollution. We can keep the good uses of the airport. We can keep the pilot training. We can keep the medical flights. And we can also really try and push for exploring safety improvements within the current footprint of the airport. That's the baseline I would consider or carefully consider safety improvements. But I would strongly, push back as strongly as possible against expansion to get there.
Yes, so I also do not support expansion at the airport. I think if there are legitimate safety improvements that need to be made, we should do that. And I don't support the idea that we have to accommodate a bigger plane. That's just a slippery slope. There's always going to be yet a bigger plane and another bigger plane. And so I don't think we need to do that in the Baylands at all.
The airport is a very important part of our community, medical flights. And, but that said, the current footprint is doing everything we need to do. There's no reason to expand it. And so I don't see any reason to expand it.
I'm not convinced that expanding the airport is necessary. Maybe there's some reasons that we don't know yet. But if it's safety, I might consider something. But I think we should use the technology that exists to make the airport safer. And I would certainly support the ducks.
Yep, we went through everybody. Why don't we do this one backwards, so to speak? So you'll get 90 seconds for closing remarks. And by backwards, what I mean is I think we'll start with you, Mayor Stone, and work our way back up this way.
All right, well, thank you, Vic, and thank you, everybody, for your journey tonight. Real pleasure to be able to spend an evening with you talking about our vision for Palo Alto. I'm really proud of what we've been able to accomplish together in the last four years. I think we have led on a variety of issues from affordable housing to climate and to issues of youth mental health and wellbeing. Vic, I want to appreciate you and the work that you've done in that space as well and on suicide prevention. It's what really drove me into public service when I was 23 years old. I graduated from Paly right around the time of the first clusters of teen suicides. And I sought appointment to the Human Relations Commission in Palo Alto shortly after that to be able to make a difference. And so I feel so privileged and honored to be in a role right now where I'm able to lead on those particular issues. Since January, announcing this task force, we have made significant gains in that area. We're going to be opening up a new teen center in North Palo Alto. We're providing free rides through our Palo Alto Link program to young people trying to access, trying to access services. I'm currently in talks with Palo Alto University to bring their program of counseling and therapy into our teen programs. We're working on, I have staff right now working on a partnership there, first of its kind, and working with the JED Foundation, a nationally recognized group that is interested in coming to Palo Alto and helping us develop and advance these policies further. First time they've ever done this for a city, so I'm really excited. So I appreciate you all being here and welcome you to visit my website, creerstone.com, to be able to learn more. Thank you.
All right, we'll see if I can finish my story from the beginning from earlier tonight. I came to Palo Alto about 20 years ago and was really fortunate to get great jobs here at Slack and Google and raise my family here. I've got two children that I've been raising with my husband here in Ventura in Barron Park. And it's absolutely my pleasure to be giving back and doing public service through my time, six years on the Planning and Transportation Commission and several other committees around. And what I'm looking for and why I'm running for Palo Alto City Council is that there's, there's more to our, to living in our city than four walls and a roof, right? We need to live here, but we also need to have a life while we're here. And so all these conversations we've been having about retail and business and after-school programs and Third Thursday and hanging out on our business districts, that's part of it. And it's really important to me because I've already spent 20 years here and I'm probably going to spend the next 20 years here. I need to have something fun to do with my friends. My kids need to have something fun to do. And that's all part of life in Palo Alto. So you're part of it. And I thank you all for being here, being willing to do business here and put up with all our Palo Alto process. And hopefully, we can enjoy a lot more time together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming tonight and for sharing all of this with us. I want to close with this. As an Olympian, I had a dream and a goal and a timeline to get to the Olympic Games. I'm pretty used to working hard, showing up, getting up at 5:30 in the morning, actually 5 o'clock, to go to practice, to being on a team, to being persistent and determined and getting to the end of the pool as fast as possible. And when I'm elected, I want to do just that. I do believe in my vision for Palo Alto and I have the focus and determination to see it through to fruition. We didn't talk about climate change tonight at all, I don't think. But it's so important, especially to the young people in our community. My grandson, when I asked him what's important to him, he said, "Climate change, that's it." And there's a wonderful saying that I read about the teens saying, "We can't afford to slow down." And I think that should be our motto in Palo Alto about climate change. I'm also interested in creating a new Cubberly, enhancing partnerships with Stanford and Palo Alto Unified School District, the importance of sports, health, wellness, and lifelong exercise. And I really care about what we're leaving our children. Thank you so much again. And please visit my website, cribsforcouncil.com. Thank you for being here and thanks to the chamber.
I mentioned earlier that housing is the biggest issue. But we're just not creating housing. We're not, we're housing people. Quality of life and the livability of these new apartments are really important. And so we have to look, especially down in San Antonio, we have to be looking at bike lanes, we have to be looking at parks. There are going to be kids living over there who want to go over to Green Meadow and visit their friends. And they're going to have to cross two busy roads. And we really have to make that priority have safe paths so kids can be kids and play with each other. The second thing is Cubberly, is that I live in South Palo Alto and that's essential. If you go over there, there's so many nonprofits, really good organizations that use Cubberly. And as our population grows, we're going to need Cubberly even more so. Some of the dance studios, for example, in San Antonio will be displaced when that becomes housing. So we're going to have more people, more demand. We have to make Cubberly a priority. It's really important for our livability in the city. We also have, the city budget is coming out of COVID and we still are recovering from that. And that's something that we have to pay attention to because a well-run budget requires, has an effect on everything. And then finally, vibrant retail. We have to work with the retailers, find out what do they need? How can we help them? Can we have more events to bring people down into shopping areas? Can we fix up the streetscapes? Collaborating with them is really, really important.
Thanks for the opportunity tonight. I believe that my passion for Palo Alto, my experience, and my integrity make me an excellent choice for city council. We're going to grow and get denser as a city and partially because we need to. And we already started down that track before the state passed hundreds of new laws to mandate this. But I think it's really important how we do it exactly. We need to do that and maintain our open spaces, grow our parks. We need to keep supporting our schools and libraries, other community services, including Cubberly, of course. And we need to maintain and improve our existing infrastructure as we try to plan for multimodal streets and squash them in where we just had Streets for Cars before. I'm a voice for residents and local businesses. That has always been my focus in 17 years of service to my community. And I wanted to lastly say that the things we have in Palo Alto that we really enjoy are not an accident. They're a legacy from leaders, both elected and local volunteers who came before us. And we need to preserve those things and maintain them and grow them. And I'm hoping to be part of a council that will make great choices about 100-year, 200-year choices like grade separations and how these things will affect the entire community. And finally, I would like to say something that tacks on to, something I didn't get to say about community and abilities and helping people. And that is, it is really important to know your neighbors and to offer them help. Do you want that one?
I'll try this mic. I love Palo Alto for its urban nature, for its walkability, for its small businesses, for events like the farmer's market and like Third Thursday. And I want Palo Alto to evolve and grow as a city. We can have housing affordability. I started with the anecdote about how my parents really wanted me to go to school in Palo Alto. Our school enrollment has been plummeting. In 2018, it was 12,000 students. Now it's 10,000 and still falling. And there are so many factors here. Obviously, those were tumultuous six years. But housing affordability, the ability for young families to actually live here, is a critical issue. We need more housing, more affordable housing, but also more mixed-income housing to actually create those opportunities. We also really need safe streets for both transportation and public safety. On average, about two people per year die in traffic accidents, pedestrians, cyclists in Palo Alto. We can adopt a Vision Zero goal. We can meaningfully plan on infrastructure. Oh, should have been this loud to begin with. We can really plan on infrastructure, traffic enforcement, and education. And finally, we can really revitalize our business districts. We can invest in our streetscapes. We can simplify. We can change the culture. I've been endorsed by amazing groups, most notably the Democratic Party of Santa Clara County. I've also been endorsed by groups representing gun safety, renters, realtors, and more. I'll bring a coalition and I'll bring a more vibrant Palo Alto.
Well, thanks for spending this evening with us. I think we all share that we believe that Palo Alto is really a wonderful and exceptional place. And we all know of ways that can be better. And there lies the two sides of this. When I came back on the council in 2021, I was really concerned with some of the direction we were taking. It seemed that the city manager and city staff was running the decision-making too much. And the council was either frustrated with them or didn't know how to change that. We hadn't been making progress on housing. We now have 6,000 housing units approved by the state zoning for in the next eight years. We have renter protections that we didn't have that I think are balanced and reasonable renter protections. Our climate program that I had led on in my second year as mayor in 2016 of a goal to reduce by 80% by 2030, we were not making progress on and we now are on full steam ahead on it. We had had slashes in our public safety, police, fire, and slashes in our community services. And I led the restoration on that. And I fought against the staff and did so successfully. And we're now back to virtually complete staffing levels that we were before. Going forward, we have to address youth. The Cubberly Center, which we're in negotiations with the district on, reinvigorating our downtowns and continuing our progress on our climate.
So climate change. In the 19th century, Reed de Janeiro planted an urban forest in the heart of the city. Let's follow that model and do the same on the lands on San Antonio. Instead of building housing there, make that an urban forest and build the housing on the shopping center and the research park. We must keep unbuilt lands unbuilt and green. And we must underground the railroad and unite the city and get rid of Suicide Alley and put a linear park there and bike paths there and not using the streets as bike paths. So my main thesis is we need to innovate in our thinking of how to go forward with the future of Palo Alto. I faced an existential crisis as a senior living in Oak Creek. We organized and we fought back against that. Now we must fight forward and work together with the university, the business community, and the VC community to do housing affordable on a large scale. 6,000 is good, but it's not enough. And the green spaces that we have are great, but they're not enough for the future. So we must go greener. And that means in some few places, going higher. But we can go higher greenly. Look at my leaflet, see some of those buildings in Brazil that are green and high.
Okay. I'm going to make a few closing remarks, which will include a couple of thank yous and some quick information. But I also, we have this room till about 8 o'clock. So some of the candidates may stick around. If you have individual questions for them or you want to talk to them one-on-one, you'll have that opportunity. So for a few, a few other things, let's start with a few thank yous. First, let's thank them. Though it's a while ago, I can remember being in their position. You know, and you're sitting here trying to come up with all these things, you know, quickly, question after question. So, and you all did great. Timing-wise, we couldn't be more efficient, I think, than you were. So I appreciate that. I want to make sure, thank the timekeepers again. Did a great job, kept everybody on time. I want to thank the Government Affairs Committee of the chamber for being willing to do this and put this, put this evening on. So it took some work. It was great of you to be willing to do it. I think a lot of people got some good information out of it. Maybe it'll help with your decision-making. I noticed while I was sitting up here, since I noticed while I was sitting up here, since they were working so smoothly, I was watching a lot of you. And I could tell people were very attentive. So I want to thank you folks for attending, but also being right on cue with what was going on. We appreciate the fact that you came and that you paid attention to what was going on. I think we're all better off for that. So remember these couple of things. First of all, we're in the middle of, you know, some contentious other elections out there that are going on that you're all well aware of. But this is an important election. There are four seats up for election, which means it's the majority of the council. The four people who get elected will have a big say in what happens over the next four years. So it's right of us. I was kidding the people who were putting this together. I said, part of the reason why I was willing to do this is I want to come and hear the candidates and make sure I understand where they stand on certain things. So this is an important election. It will affect what happens locally and it's one you should pay attention to. November 5th, that's the day we vote. For the candidates, I used to tell people, especially when I was representing some candidates, we'd be at some kickoff meeting and say, everybody know what November 5th is? And I'd say, that's the day they're going to get elected. So it's an important day and please get out there and vote. Get out there and vote locally. It's as important as any of the other elections that are out there. So thank you, everybody, for attending. You're welcome.